So it's now streaming on YouTube. And it's just loading as we speak. Okay, we are now live. So welcome to the 8th of June 7pm. Oh, one moment, one of our colleagues is just joining us. Okay, welcome councillor Powers. I can't. So welcome councillor Powers, we're just going to check your name, does it say councillor Powers in the actual? No. I'll just change your name so that everyone can see who's on the call. And can I just check that colleagues have had the papers for today? Can you put your hands up if you've received papers please? So I have councillor Gazine, Vag, Thomas Walters, councillor Waters, have you received papers? I'll ask her again in a minute, councillor Old, have you received papers? Put your hand up please, put your hand up.
Not today, no, sorry.
Okay, but have you received the agenda?
Yes.
Can I ask you move your camera so we can see your full face please councillor Old? I'm sorry. So I've asked councillor Old if she will actually show her full face on camera because that would be useful. So can I just, what I've heard from? Okay. Councillor Old has rejoined. So in attendance today, we have councillor Gazine, councillor Vag, councillor Thomas, councillor Waters, councillor Smith, councillor Greening, councillor Tugay, councillor Powers and councillor Old, and obviously myself as chairman councillor Shelbourne Barry. So the agenda was shared with you previously. What I'd like to first do is not go through the statement that I would normally read at the beginning of a meeting due to time constraints. However, what I'd like to do is just check that having had receipt of your agenda, which you all have done, and or indeed papers, to actually start the meeting, recognising we all act within the code of conduct and within the Nolan principles on this phone, on this meeting Zoom today. So moving into the main agenda, the first part of the agenda is public participation. I'm not aware of any questions that have been submitted today from members of the public, so, or indeed members of the public requested to join today. So I'm moving then on to the main part of the agenda and the first part of the agenda is apologies. I am only aware of apologies from councillor Hearn, councillor Hinks and councillor Eddington. If a councillor has submitted apologies prior to this meeting, it would have potentially gone into the clerk. Oh, excuse me, one of our applicants is rejoining. Brian. Um. It would have gone into council, so I will check that with the deputy clerk. Now today, as you can see, we have councillors on the call and two guest speakers, two guests, two members of the public who wish to talk about co-option. However, who, we do not have the clerk or the deputy clerk on the call today within the meeting. So the meeting minutes I'm proposing will be taken by councillor Gazine and councillor Vag to take the minutes alongside the recording that will be held on Zoom and also obviously the recording that will go live on YouTube as we speak. So that that will in fact be like a belt and braces, just to make sure we can record all the notes and minutes of the meeting. Moving into the full agenda, declarations of interest, do members of the council have any declarations of interest they wish to make known at this time? I'm just going to unmute you if anyone puts a hand up. So if you have a declaration, you need to state, can you put your hand up? Okay, thank you. So we're now move on, no one's recorded a declaration of interest at this time. If I now move into the minutes of the meetings previously held. So we have three minutes that we will sign via e-signatory, with this being the recording of the agreement of each each set of minutes. So the first set of minutes, I'm going to go back to the minutes that were held on the 6th of May. And councillors would have received these minutes. I in fact made some amendments to the minutes. So firstly, what I'd like to do is I'm going to ask that you read, have read the minutes and the amendments that have been made. And then I would like to ask for comment in terms of any additional comments you may wish to make. I need to now unmute you to be able to do that. I'm actually thinking there is background noise, so can I ask wherever possible if you have a mobile or anything near your actual laptop? You think you place that away from your laptop at this time. So in terms of the minutes of the 6th of May, page one, any comments from the, on the amended versions that were shared by the clerk? Page one. The ends in the clerk's report.
No comment. No comments.
Thank you. And page two, the ends in items for the next Zoom meeting, any comments? For the 6th of May. Okay. If there are no comments, no one's putting up their hand or asking to speak. Can I then ask for a proposer for these, for the minutes of the 6th of May? And you can put your hand up, so that's councillor Gazine and a second, would that be councillor Smith? Thank you. And can I ask for a vote? So it's all councillors to vote. If you agree with the minutes. So I'm seeing councillor Gazine, myself, councillor Vag, councillor Thomas, councillor Smith, councillor Greening, councillor Tugay, councillor Powers, councillor Old, thank you. And councillor Gazine and councillor Vag, have you recorded that within?
Yes, yes.
The next item on the agenda is the minutes of the 19th of May. Can I ask, are there any amendments to page one? Page two. And these are the amended minutes. And finally, page three, which ends in the meeting ended at 3:45pm. No comments, no amendments. Can I ask for a proposer at this time? Councillor Powers, a second, councillor Tugay, and can I take a vote please? Councillor Gazine, Shelbourne, Vag, Thomas, Smith, Greening, Tugay, Power and councillor Old. Councillor Old, are you voting? I can't see your face. So can I ask you change your camera please so we can clearly see you? Can I ask them for those against? No, can I ask for, so can I have asked for a proposer and a second?
Actually, I wish to abstain, but you've missed that one out.
No, I've, okay, I apologise.
Okay. And just for the record, Sue, I have an exceptionally bad back, so I can't sit still in one position for the duration of the meeting. Sorry.
Thank you for making us aware councillor Old. So we have a number of councillors which I've already said that have supported, no one's voted to against. And we have one person who is, who is abstained, which is councillor Old. So in terms of the vote, is that? Pardon? Councillor Thomas, sorry, did I miss you? Sorry, I beg your pardon, did I miss you? Okay, so. Oh, apologies. Okay, so do we have a recorded vote on that councillor Gazine and Vag?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. We now move on to the minutes of the meeting of the 26th of May. So in terms of these minutes, can I ask for everyone, have you read page one? And do you agree? Are there any comments rather, sorry? Page two. That ends in the minutes are in draw format until signed on full council on the 8th of June. Any comments?
No comments.
Okay, can I have a proposer please for the minutes? Councillor Smith, can I have a second? Councillor Powers, and in terms of a vote, can I have a vote please? If you're in support of the minutes of the 26th of May. So I have councillor Gazelle, myself, Vag, Thomas, Smith, Greening, Tugay, Power, and can I have anyone against? Or opposed to the minutes? Abstaining? Councillor Old is abstaining. So in terms of a proposer and second, have you, we completed that, sorry?
Yes.
Thank you. And the second you've recorded and a vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Now tonight, we are extremely privileged, and I'm going to use the word privilege, to have two outstanding candidates who've come forward to be co-opted onto the council. And with that in mind, what I'd like to do is open the floor to ask Brian and Lizzie if they would be open to talking today, just a sentence or two about why you'd like to be a councillor and then we will undertake a vote, a proposer, a second, and we'll vote as a council. And as a council, we have one vote each. So I'm going to move firstly with, oh. One moment, Linda's joining back again. Councillor Waters has rejoined. Thank you. So. Can I invite Lizzie to just say a few words on why she'd like to be a councillor and then I'll move to Brian?
Thank you, everyone. I know you've already had the personal statement, so I won't go over what I wrote in that. Hopefully you all received it and were able to read it. And I just wanted to add to that really that in terms of what I would like to work with you all for the town, I was thinking the regeneration obviously offers an amazing opportunity. I think we all realise that and I'm sure that's something you've discussed quite a lot already. But I wanted to say that alongside all the new opportunities that might provide and the new infrastructure and new projects that might get funded as a result. I think it's important to remember that actually we already have a lot of amazing resources in our town that are well cared for and well managed by the townspeople. Things like the leisure centre, the memorial hall and I'm sure many others. And I think going forward, it will be very important alongside the regen to also think carefully how all these existing facilities, projects and groups also fit into that. So that's something that I very much like to work with you all on. And you know, hopefully you've seen that I'm a passionate member of the community and also through my work and volunteering experience have had a, had a lot of varied experiences that I would hope to to bring to you all. And I also love people and love working in teams. So I would look forward to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. And Brian, I would like to invite you to the floor.
Thank you, yes. Well, as you probably all know, I'm involved in various things around Wincanton, the memorial hall, the community hospital, friends of the community hospital, the dementia friends, the carnival treasure for the carnival, treasure for amaditomatics. And obviously I get involved, a lot of people involved at those various events around the town. And that's what I'd like to continue to do. And I've obviously met a lot of you already doing events, whether it be at the hall or whether it's at Margaret Square, for instance. We like to get, because mostly because of my public address equipment and Molly's helped to set all that up. And aside all that, I know Lizzie quite well because obviously we're on the same committee for certain things and feel that actually her organisational skills are very good. And then if you chose her, then I'd be happy to still continue to support the council in any way I can on the events that we've actually planned. And so if that's your wish, then fine. If you wish to let me, obviously I'll do my best for the community as you, as you know, we always try to. That's really all I'd say, thank you.
Thank you. I very much appreciate it. And I genuinely mean it's great to have such high calibre people coming forward to actually stick with us on council. And who, no matter who is chosen today or voted on today, the the second candidate, please feel free to come forward again. Because your skills, each of your skills you bring to, would bring forward will be an asset to this town and this council. So with that in mind, the next, the next thing that we now would normally do is vote. This is going to be an open vote and you, as as a council, we have one vote each. So you can vote for a member of either Lizzie or for Brian, or for Brian or Lizzie. And at the end of it, we will collate those votes and say, state if, who's got the most votes to actually then go forward to for co-option. Is everyone happy with that as an approach? Is that sort of a normal approach? Brilliant, thank you. So I'm going to ask you individually whether you support and you put your hand up if that is the case. So first person I'm going to ask, and we're going to start with Lizzie because Lizzie's to my left for some reason, it works for me, I don't know why. Lizzie has been come forward as a candidate. So councillor Greening, do you support Lizzie?
I do, yes.
Councillor Gazine, do you support Lizzie?
Yes.
Councillor Old? Do you support Lizzie? You can put a hand, sorry councillor Old, you're currently muted. Could you unmute councillor? Can you accept? Thank you.
I would like to abstain from but voting for either of them. And my wish is to do so is because of what is currently going on with council. I think it's unwise to be co-opting when we're facing potentially being sued and there is conflict within the council. So I will be abstaining from voting for either of you, but I do, I do strongly believe you're very two fantastic candidates. But I'm sorry, but that's my vote at the moment.
Mute councillor, thank you. So councillor Old is abstaining, councillor Powers. Councillor Cars, are you voting for Lizzie? And councillor Smith, sorry, I'm trying to follow a list. Councillor Smith, are you voting for Lizzie?
Yes.
And councillor Thomas, are you voting for Lizzie?
Yes.
Councillor Tugay, are you voting for Lizzie?
This is very embarrassing for me.
Corrie. So councillor Tugay, you said, sorry, I missed that.
Um. Yes, I think I would go with Lizzie.
Councillor Vag?
I agree, they're both great candidates, but on this occasion I'll go with Lizzie, hope Brian comes back to us.
And councillor Waters, do you, are you voting for Lizzie?
Yes.
Thank you. And so I can see from, well, I'm myself, forgive me Brian, you're a great asset to our council. And I truly wish you to come back again. But on this occasion, I will be voting for councillor, for Lizzie to be co-opted.
That's absolutely fine. I mean, I think that's a good choice. I know what Lizzie can do and any support you need in the future, then you're, they're more than welcome.
Thank you. So can I just check councillor Gazine or councillor Vag, have you counted the votes please?
Yes. There are nine for Lizzie and one abstention.
Thank you. So on this time. Do we need to do a proposer? Is that just a, that's it, it's a vote? So I'm, I'm sorry, because not having the clerk, I would have tested that beforehand. And so on this occasion, we'd like to formally welcome you, Lizzie, to our council if you, and the paperwork would need to be completed for tomorrow. And truly, we're gonna, yes, I thought I heard a round of applause there. So welcome, welcome. And genuinely, Brian, I 100% and councillor, what I'm hearing from councillor is we'd welcome you back at a later date if a co-option appears. So thank you for that. You are welcome to stay, Brian and Lizzie, or if you wish to leave, that that is your choice, but you're welcome to stay.
Well, I will depart. Thank you very much for the time anyway. And good luck, good luck Lizzie with the job. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, bye bye.
Thank you, bye bye. So what we're now going to do, having completed that, is I'm, would like to now move on in the agenda. We have a number of other items on the agenda, the next one being planning. And I'd like to ask councillor Thomas to come forward, if I may, to speak to planning. You need to accept the unmute.
It's been.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so there's, I've got three here. First one is 20/01468, full application for Two High Street, which is the lemon tree. It's not a redevelopment, it's actually more of a refurbishment and repair programme. They're not going to change the floor pan or knock anything down or add anything. It's a listed building, it's probably no, it's things like window replacement and like for like timber. Sort of acceptable double glazing, stone repairs, cleaning, they're going to do a bit of excavation at the back to see if underpinning is required. But otherwise, it's basically a repair job and a preservation of the building. So there are, there's two applications. That one is also 20/01469, which is a listed building consent, which obviously allows for the, for the other application.
So was there any comments actually on the website in relation to this?
No.
Has it ever been through council before that we're aware of that we had concerns about any work?
Not that I saw.
No. So I'm going to unmute you all and then I'm going to ask you if you have no further comments for the next step. So what I'm hearing is on this, for this particular application, which is number two, the high street. There are no residents that are raising concerns about the application. What we now need to decide as a council is do we support that application? Do we wish to put any additional information in to caveat that? That comment, or do we, do we actually say we don't support it? So do councillors in the first instance support it? Some of them are still muted. So I'm going to go around you individually. You need to accept the unmute, I'm afraid councillors, to enable us to move forward. Thank you. So councillor, thank you councillor Vag, if you wouldn't mind, thank you very much. So on this occasion, I'm for to the high street. Is there anyone who has any comments? If not, I'm looking for a proposer to support councillor Tugay and a second is councillor Smith. Okay, is that recorded councillor Gazine and councillor Vag?
Yes.
Councillor Thomas, I move back to you.
Okay, second application, this is.
Yes, sorry. Oh, I apologize. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So can I ask for a vote? I'm having a moment. I can see that councillor Gazine, myself, councillor Vag, councillor Thomas, councillor Smith, councillor Greening, councillor Tugay, councillor Powers, councillor Old and councillor Waters are supportive of the proposal to enable this to move forward. Can you pick me up Ray if I miss anything again?
I will, don't worry.
Does Lizzie want to vote on that?
Yeah, well, I was gonna say, do I vote now?
I don't think Lizzie can because she's not signed the paperwork.
All right, oh shut up, sorry.
But full, full marks for keenness. So. Next item, sorry councillor Thomas.
Is 2001276, which is a full application. I don't know this place personally, but I did look at a lot of the paperwork. It's the Willows Moor Lane. Rod Grove Cops, if anyone knows that. It's basically a strip of land on the right hand side as you go towards someone sort of what looks like a stud farm or a farm yard. And this strip of land, somebody wants to build a 10 by five metre log cabin for holiday accommodation. It comes under the category of a caravan because it can be moved. It's on currently on agricultural land but isn't used for such a thing. I mean, maybe for a paddock as for horse grazing.
Councillor Greening, I've seen.
Sorry.
So I think we've already voted on this a few weeks ago, didn't we?
I thought we had.
And we all voted in favour of it. Has it gone to, did district refuse it? Now it's come back to us with an amendment?
Well, I'm looking at, hold on. I'm trying to find the.
Yes, the question site, wasn't it? We discussed this last week.
It was on additional plans.
Yes, it was today, but I don't understand why it's come back. I didn't pick that up, so apologies.
So I mean, I don't know whether anything's changed or it doesn't appear to have done.
No, I think, if I may. I think we continue, if we voted on this last time, which councillor Greening is correct. Then I think what we do is we'll leave our comment as it was before. We made a statement then which was in supporters, I remember. Okay, so that one we're just recording as we'll investigate why it appeared again with the deputy clerk. Okay, don't worry councillor Thomas.
Okay, well, the next and last one is 20/01431, full application. It's the land opposite Dial House on the batch. I think it's the, that bit of land that used to have that boat on it for years and years. And it's the erection of a detached dwelling. Stone and render facade, slate roof, timber frame windows. I think it's owned by the house opposite. I think it's owned by the people who own Dial House. There is one public comment and it comes from somebody called David Kenyon, who lives next door. I think, is he the same SSDC planning consultant? He is, okay. Well, he's in favour, so. The pre-app was granted in last year and that's, that's the only comment on recorded. I mean, it is useless, derelict land with an old garage on, so I don't suppose there's any real issue there.
Any, anyone have any comments? Was there any comments on the site?
Just from the name, oh, just on that.
Any comments from the floor? Any time that councillors are aware this has come through before? Okay, so in terms of where we are today, are we looking to propose or propose the application, support it? Is that what we're saying? So can I have a? So can I have a proposer councillor Thomas, a seconda is that councillor Smith? And can I have a vote please from the floor? So I have councillor Gazine, myself, councillor Vag, Thomas, councillor Smith, councillor Greening, councillor Tugay, councillor Power, councillor Old and councillor Waters supporting it. And we have a proposer and seconda, thank you. I thought there was Hook Farm. Today. On the additional papers.
I may have been looking at the wrong ones, I do apologise, I might have been looking at the wrong.
So we had the, no, I think you were correct in the first one, which is the dorma to the High Street and the other, the supporting application, then it went into the long.
Yeah, I mean, I know that Hook Valley is coming up at Area East next, well, this week actually. I thought, all I, how that stood, I just thought we were preparing our statement for that meeting.
Councillor Tugay?
I've just had a message from one of our ward members, a little bit concerned that we have not in fact registered for this meeting yet.
Registered?
Yes, we need to register to speak at the Area East meeting.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon, yes.
So he's, he is a little bit concerned that we have not yet done so, I don't know when the deadline is.
But it's usually, I think it's, it's usually before nine of that day.
Right, as long as we're in time.
But it's quite an early meeting, I think anyway, but it's not to Wednesday, isn't it?
Yes.
So if you register tonight or tomorrow, I don't know, who does that, shall I register or somebody else?
So basically as whoever's looking to speak on behalf of the council would register, as you did before, for the other application. And, and obviously all members of the public who've received a letter from SSDC regarding Hook Farm will also have the opportunity to ask to speak at that meeting. But in terms of us as a town council, previously with Hook Valley, we didn't support the application, if I remember correctly. Does anyone have any further comments? Because basically what we now need to do to go to forward to Area East is submit a comment that's different to what we submitted previously. So does anyone have any further comments? If not, in this instance, I will ask that we prepare a comment, taking into account the comments we submitted previously and circulate that on email, but we will register to speak on the day?
That would be a good idea, I think.
Okay, so that's our plan of action then. So in terms of this particular agenda item, Hook Valley, we're suggesting that we secure a slot on the Area East meeting, we will prepare a statement building on what was submitted previously, when it last went through our council and it will be circulated on email, so people are aware of that. And then councillor Thomas will speak on that three minute slot at Area East on the 10th. So can I have a proposer for that please? Councillor Tugay, a seconda councillor Smith and a vote if you're in support of that as a proposal. So that's councillor Gazine, myself, councillor Shelbourne Barrow, councillor Vag, councillor Thomas, councillor Smith, councillor Greening, councillor Tugay, councillor Powers, councillor Old and councillor Waters, thank you. Is there anything else councillor Thomas you wish to bring to our attention at this time?
No, unless I've forgotten another thing, but no, I don't think.
No, I very much appreciate what you've done and for attending the Area East meeting on our behalf on the 10th. So thank you. Right, so if there's no further comments, we then move on. Now, the next part of the agenda, which is point six, seven, eight, nine, we do, and in fact, point 11, 12 and 13, we do not actually have the clerk on the call today to actually provide advice and guidance on those items. So the, with that in mind, my thoughts, my feelings are that we should stand those items down today and move them forward. And with that in mind, we would then move to the checklist on the agenda. So that's point 10. So on point 10. The checklist, all colleagues would have received a copy of the checklist. So I'm going to first deal with that. Are there any comments in relation to the checklist?
No.
None at all? As I said, the clerk isn't here to provide any additional information, but if people did have concerns, we would actually take advice. So if there's no comments on the checklist, can I ask that I have a proposer for the checks please, the check summary? Councillor Smith and councillor Vag, are you saying a seconda?
Yes.
And can I have a vote from the floor supporting the check summary checklist? So that's councillor Gazine, myself, Shelbourne Barrow, Vag, Thomas, Smith, Greening, Tugay, councillor Powers, councillor Old, councillor Waters. Thank you. And in terms of a proposer and seconda, we have completed that task. Now the next point on the agenda, for some reason I'm getting backfeed on, on, because you're not all on mute, I think. And the next part of the agenda is to actually agree two people to sign. So normally what we would do in council is agree that on, within this meeting, I am aware, because there's only a certain number of people that can actually sign the checks, that councillor Hinks has actually said on email that she would be happy to sign. However, we still need a second person to sign those checks, so can I, councillor Waters, thank you for that, I appreciate that. So we now have councillor Hinks and councillor Waters who will sign the checks tomorrow. So in terms of other items on the agenda. That from my perspective is closed because the items that we would have discussed, the clerk isn't present. Do I, councillor Tugay, need to gain any further clarification on that as vice?
It would be helpful, I think, if the full council supported your move.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that our councillors should be asked whether they support your move or not.
Okay, so the rationale for, thank you. The rationale for not including the neighbourhood plan, which was to elect a working group, open spaces and the end of year accounts, the annual governance and accountability return for 2019, 2020, the committees and working group and the correspondence and clerks' report is because the clerk isn't here today, and also the deputy clerk was unable to attend. So in terms of, and it was, it's really important, those, one of those representatives are on the meeting because of the knowledge they would bring to each of those items. So what I first would like to do is look for a proposer to move these forward and a seconda. So a proposer is councillor Gazine to move them forward and a seconda would be councillor Thomas and a vote, I'm going to vote in support, vote against and those who wish to abstain. So could you put your hand up if you're in support of moving it forward? So that's councillor Gazine, councillor Shelbourne Barrow, councillor Vag, councillor Thomas, councillor Smith, councillor Greening, councillor Tugay, councillor Powers, councillor Old, councillor Waters. So we have a vote to move it forward to the next, next meeting or available meeting when the clerk is present. In terms of the next item on the agenda, we've now closed the meeting for this evening. I want to, as I said, it's been a great evening for welcoming Lizzie on board, you're a great asset to a really strong council, so thank you for that. I'd like to thank you for your time tonight. The next step is that as a council, the minutes from this meeting will be written up by our deputy clerk over the next week and agenda will be drawn up for the next meeting and we will then look to, once Lizzie has formally signed all of her paperworks, to inviting Lizzie to that meeting as well. But at this moment in time, I'd like to thank you all and wish you a good evening. And I'm now going to end streaming on Facebook and Zoom.
Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you chair, good night everybody.
Thank you, good night.